Hello everyone, welcome to I A C. Here is my target S S C C G L C H S L English Session Nine we will discuss. Let us start with the first question, right? It is one to five questions. One to five questions, my closest pen is not there, let us answer these, okay? So my first question is what is there? There are about five thousand languages dash in the world today, okay? And now this blank word, okay? This blank word, I will tell you everything about it. This language, I will tell you everything about it, okay? Language is noun. So noun, I will tell you everything about it. This adjective, I will tell you everything about it. And verb, I will tell you everything about it. Adjective, I will tell you everything about it. If a verb is adjective, it is V four, V three. Active sense is V four, passive sense is V three. But my language action is happening. Like this, I have a sense, passive sense, and my language is V three. So this blank, my language is V three. That is what you do. Otherwise, if I am trying to choose options, options, I will directly choose. But I will always choose, my question is easy. This is an easy question, if I am trying to choose, just choose words, language. Language is something, words are suitable, that is why I choose it. However, some of them are complicated questions. Now, if we are trying to do anything, this is used. In order to do it, adjective is needed. This language action is happening, passive is needed. And if my options are V three. Some of them are words, I will tell you everything about it. For example, easy words, spoken, illustrated, translated, or shown. These are easy words. However, some unfamiliar words are there. Unfamiliar words, what is it? What is V one, what is V two, what is V three, what is V four? Now, if we are trying to do it, this is used. So now, if we are trying to do it, adjective is needed. Adjective, passive sense is V three, active sense is V four. So this is easy. Suddenly, I will tell you everything about it, that is fine. If my language is, translate, illustrated, or shown. Obviously, the language is, this is easy. This question is easy, difficult is not to say. But the concept is very important. This adjective is valuable. Verb, I have a sense, V four, V three, active, V four, passive. This point is put, okay? Now, see. Remember, translated, illustrated, meaning is? Explain with pictures. Illustrated, meaning is? Then, in order to do it, pictures. Pictures explain, what is it? Illustrated. So anyway, so my answer is what? So spoken, easy one, right? Now, let us go for the next one. So, language spoken in the world today, but scholars grouped them together into relatively few families. So probably less than twenty, okay? So my five thousand languages, what is it? So twenty, so unnecessarily, group, group, finally, twenty groups. So category, okay? Next one. Languages are dashed to each other by shared words, okay? Remember, languages are dashed to each other. So my two are important. First, what is it? Language, subject, R. R is B form, R is B form, okay? Normally, B form. B form, possible to speak, it is not known. Now, I am, is, are, was, was, been. So, B, we name it B forms. Generally, B forms, when I come, what is possible to say? Let us see. Possible to say, first possible to say, V four. V four. Next, V three. My active, active, V four is. And if V three is, V three is. But V two, possible is. And two plus V one, what is possible to say? Two plus V one, okay? And if my B forms, V four, V three, V three, two plus V one. Let us see. So, R is B form, options, I have a sense, V four, V three, two plus V one. I will try, what is it? Link, link, V two, V three. And V three, what is it? My link is, links is, only link is, no. Because, okay, possible to say, so answer is what? Option, this is easy to choose. If my passive voice is, because, if my B form, V three is. Like this, I have a sense, passive. But here, language, I have a sense, language are linked to each other by shared words. But easy question. So for this question, the answer is what? Option, concept, B forms, V three, passive, V three. And concept, little concept, use it. I will do it, okay? Now, let us go for the next question. Third one, let us see. The theory, the theory is that the members of dash linguistic group, okay? Remember, groups, I have a sense, five thousand languages. Then, I will do it. So twenty, I have a sense, our groups, our groups, smart. So the theory is that the members, members, all members will, every linguistic group has members. And I will do it. If I have twenty, I have twenty. Twenty groups, our twenty groups, each group, each. So, I have a sense, distribute. Distribute, group, our group, every person, each. Our group, every thing, each, distribute, use. If we are, what is it? Distribute, our twenty groups, each group, each. The members of each linguistic group. But this, we will try, try, which is, each one, option, choose. Because, if we are in a situation, in a group, members, each group, every group. So, the name, distribute, what is it? Each is, remember, literally, determiner. So, all, whatever, determine, very, add verb. Add verb, determiner, determiner. But my, so distributed, one, one, each is. Answer is, each group, the members of each linguistic group. Normally, linguistic, language is related, language. So anyway, answer is what? Option C. Now, let us go for the next question, fourth one, okay? The theory is that the members of each linguistic group dash descended from. So, what is it? Verb, I will tell you everything about it. So, originated from, coming from. Now, see, the theory is that the members, subject, main, members. When I examine, what is it? If my language group is, this group, I will do it. Subject is, a group, subject is. If a verb, singular, branch, has been, or has been. And, has been, has. But my subject, linguist group, if now, subject, proportion, what is it? If proportion, subject, what is it? That proportion, is not known, that is, is not known. That is, I will do it, subject, consider. If my, after, is not known, members, members. But this statement, my subject, who is, members, who is? Group, members, singular, plural. Plural, if a verb is, plural, a verb is. Has, has, has been. Next, have, have been. What is it? Have descended from, have been descended from. So, no difference, my, my, how, how. How, direct, with three, is, 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 is. How, direct, with three, is, 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 is. Active, like, how, how. How, being, 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 passive. Or, how, direct, with three, is, 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 is. If descended, I will choose V three. But this is not a problem, V three. If this is, if this is, but, active, passive. What is it? Active, this group, descend, is, is. So, group, descend, is. So, group, descend, is. But my, active, passive. Like this, only, V three. So, have, plus, V three. But, my answer is, the linguistic group, have descended from. Have, so answer is, option B. This is an easy question, but large, all of this. First point, my, subject, clear, identify. If my, group, my, members. Because, what is it? Of, of, my, preparation. As the first point, next, how, V three, is, is. Have been, V three, is. This is active, this is passive. How, plus, being, plus, with three. If my, active, this is, how, plus, V three. Simple question, right? Now, let us go for the next one. My fifth question, the answer is, what is it? Have descended from one language, a common dash, okay? And my, common, descended, descended, then, origin. Then, what is it? Origin, origin, source, okay? Origin, source, all, all. If my, descended from, but, all, word, is. All, word, is, origin, source, food, no, village, no, garden, no. Ancestor, ancestor, human, human. Human, language, we will talk. So, if we are trying to do it, poor, weak, a situation, we will talk. But my, this question, so ancestor, this question, so, so. So, if my, all, descended, word, is, a word, source, origin, origin. Ancestor, so for this question, our answer is what? Option D, okay? So, easy question. My, five questions, and it is easy, easy, so five questions, answer. At least, three to four, answer, exam. But, our confidence, we will practice. Now, let us go for the next question. If my, again, close, okay? So, six to ten, you will read, okay? First one, what is it? Due to COVID nineteen, most of the industries are forced to dash work for a few months. Forced to work for a few months. But, right, due to COVID nineteen. Due to COVID nineteen, most of the industries are forced to dash work for a few months, which is impacting the environment. And COVID nineteen, lockdown, situation, factories, industries, factories. Factories, what your operations, continue, pay, pay. What work, pay, pay. For a few months, many months, work, pay. Pay, and what is it? So, halt, what is it? If my, beginning, start, reassure, reassure, reassure. Reassure, continue, continue. Because, if my, lockdown, COVID, industry, work, pay. Halt, okay? So, halt, stop, halt, meaning is? Easy question, okay? Now, let us go for the next question. What is it? Halt for a few months, which is impacting the environment. So, environment dash, environment dash. And if my, so, impact, which is, impacting. So, impacting, my, verb, impact, verb. But how, so, how, question, answer, what is it? Add verb, add. If my lockdown, industry, many days, closed, work, function, work. Working, stop, and, although, environment, impact. But, positive, negative, obvious, positive. Because, factories, work, factories, pollution, factories, pollution. Pollution, is, is, environment, impact, negative, impact, obvious. So, pollution, environment, negative impact. But, factories, run, not, three months, four months, five months. Those months, factories, factories, pollution, pollution, environment, positive, impact. But, if my, word, is, a positive, impact, is, is. Now, let us see, what is it? So, questionably, no, very, negative, impact, so, normally, economy, we will talk. Factories, run, not, economy, negative, impact, okay? Because, we will talk, environment, positive, impact. Answer is, positive, actually, in a way, no, it is not suitable. In a way, environment, in a way, environment, positive, impact, negative, impact. But, obviously, positive, answer is, options C. Now, let us go for the next question. As a result, vehicular pollution drop, is not? Pollution, vehicular pollution dropped. So, pollution dropped. So, pollution dropped, environment, positive, impact. Next, also, pollution reduced drastically. Drastic, meaning is rapid, drastic, sudden, rapid. Very, amount, drastic, drastic change. Pollution, very, level, okay? Pollution, very, level, positive, negative, positive, obvious. Environment, impact, positive, impact. Next, carbon emissions from dash sources, than before, this is clue, indeed, than before. My, than, I use, comparative degree, than, I use, comparative. Many, logic, so, degrees of comparison, logic, I will note. My, then, then, generally, first, prefer, comparative degree. Like, my, then, da, is, da, is, my, so, right, expectation, superlative degree. Da, is, my expectation, superlative degree, so, da, is, expectation, comparative degree. Otherwise, as, 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 okay? As, as, so, as, very, okay? Next to, so, next to, two, words, words, expectation, positive degree. If, first, I know, now, if my, expectation, comparative, expectation. So, da, is, expectation, superlative, expectation. Otherwise, as, 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 very, two, as, as, as. My, my, question, da, is, da, is, comparative. Option, comparative degree, is not, okay? If you, comparative degree, not, not, few years, compared, okay? The few, comparative, okay? Few, positive degree. But, my, da, is, comparative, is not, okay, comparative. Otherwise, answers, emissions from fewer sources than before, improved air quality. Air quality, improved, environment, positive, impact. Now, let us go for the next question. So, ninth one, but this has a huge dash for economies. So, my clue, button, clue, button, button, contrast, use, button, contrast. As we know, contrast, and, so, similar ideas, okay? But, use, my, but, use, my, but, contrast, contrast, opposite. So, opposite ideas, now, what, but, what? But, what, if, like, opposite ideas, like, but, what? But, what, in, in, lockdown, COVID, factories, run, not, factories, not, not. And, not, environment, positive, impact, and, not, not. But, what, in, in, environment, positive, impact, fast, you, not, not. But, next, negative, not, not. But, what, in, in, positive, not, not. But, what, in, in, negative, but, what, in, in, environment, not, not. But, what, in, in, economy, not, not. And, COVID nineteen, so, environment, positive, impact, and, economy, negative, impact. That is, but, this has a huge dash for economies. Negative, break through, no, break, meaning is advance. Break through, meaning is? Advance, but, headway, meaning is? Advance, then, forward, see, advance, then, forward, advance, then, forward. But, this is positive, this is, leap, leap, forward, or advance. Normally, leap, jump, normally, leap, jump. So, jump, like, far, what is it? But, any, positive, breakthrough, headway, leap, positive. But, positive, not, because, what, not? But, what, if, but, okay? But, what, in, in, negative, not, not. Answer, setback, 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 obstacle, so, hindrance, simple, obstacle, obstacle. Obstacle, hindrance, hinder, verb, hinder. Then, hamper, hamper, words, hamper, retard. What is it? Retard, words, retard, hamper, obstacle, words. But, easy one, so, setback, negative, not, set back. Negative, not, set back, negative, answer, okay? Now, let us go for the next question, tenth question. Due to the dash slowdown in the world, exports, imports, and informal sectors were badly hit. Is it negative, positive? Okay? Let us see. But, my, due to the dash slowdown, slowdown, so, malfunction, slowdown. Malfunction, meaning is, mal, bad. Now, mal, working, bad, function, working, bad, working, normal, malfunction, machine. A machine, is, is, a, a, malfunction. A system, is, is, a, a, malfunction. Because, due to the malfunction, no, not. But, slow down, because, in, because, point, observe. And, due to, due to, it, word, right? My, then, due to, going, going, due to, going, as, going, since, going, because. Okay, words, observe, it, words, due to, going, going, as, going, since, going, because. These words, I have, these words, we have, we, then, when, cause, is, is. Then, reason, cause, reason, due to, going, as, since, because. We, then, because, 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 because. My, because, 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 effect, because, because. My, reason, is, is, result, okay? Because, is, is, reason, is, is. But, due to, reason, result, cause, effect. Because, slow down, because, exchange. It, impact, effect, exports, imports, exports, import, informal sector, impact, affect. Because, not, that is, is. But, I, I, right, but, malfunction, not, not. Next, distribution, slowdown, distribution, slowdown, no, export, import, not. Distribution, not, then, consumption, consumption, due to the consumption slowdown in the world, exports, imports, and the informal sectors were badly hit. But, options B, alteration, alteration, change, alteration, okay? But, my, little letter, altar, 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 fight, alteration, change, altar, dispute. It, is, fight, alteration, alteration. Imports, exports, smart, not, but, slowdown, distribution, not, okay? So, only, distribution, India, distribution, consumption, consumption, import, import. Ah, whether, imports, exports, convey, can, and, slowly, convey, informal sector, badly, consumption, consumption. Distribution, not, consumption, next, possible, but, due to the consumption slowdown in the world. Overall, world, not, but, consumption, okay? So, right, so for this question, our answer is what? Option B. Now, let us go for the next one. Eleven question, eleven question, so, spotting, let us answer this one. The State Transport Department has increased the frequency of buses because, according to the new rules, only limiting passengers are allowed. So, only limiting passengers. So, my question, so, deep, study, whether, because, some, passage, paragraph, sentence. So, what, part, like, say, leave, so, that is, that is, that is, only limiting passengers, okay? Why, because, because, passengers, is, is, noun. Passengers, noun, okay? In noun, noun, adjective, noun, adjective. So, passengers, noun, noun, adjective, point, my, it, now, it, adjective. Verb, okay? Verb, adjective, V four, V three, V four, V three. V four, active, V three, passive. But, is, limiting, limiting, V four. But, passengers, limit, limit, passengers, limit, passengers, actions, passengers, action, passive, passive. Passive, V four, V three, V three, V three, limited passengers, limiting passengers, limited passengers. But, this, limiting place, limited passengers, limited, new rules, only limited passengers are allowed. The State Transport Department has increased the frequency of buses because, according to the new rules, only limited passengers are allowed. But, see, the easy question, answer, right? Limited passengers, limiting passengers, limited passengers, answer is what? Option B, okay? Now, let us go for the next question, okay? So, twelve, spotting, let us answer this one, okay? So, the Union Government has announced a gradual reboot, reboot of manufacturing sector, who was adversely affected. And, in the first reading, a place, a place, who, in a place, okay? Who, in, relative, who, in, relative, okay? Generally, relative, refer, okay? Before, subject, refer, or, general, general, relative, subject, or, relative. This, relative, never, ever, refer, but, in, in, subject, refer, okay? Who, in, sector, sector, who, a person, a person, a sector, who, a good, who, a good. Which, 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 easy question. But, manufacturing sector, which was adversely affected, who, easy question, right? So, point, adversely, adversely, meaning is unfavorable. Okay? Adverse, meaning is unfavorable, this is, adjective, adjective, unfavorable, anyway. So, my, answer, which, okay? So, if my, option B, my, error, okay? Now, let us go for the next question. If my, P Q R S, question, P Q R S, paragems, sentence, rearrangement, what is it? Now, if my, question, through, options, first, statement, last, statement, opinion, and, choose, option, compare, convenient, no problem. My, options, for, it, if, choose, first, statement, opinion, then, two, words, three, words, then, let us do that. First, statement, it, it, statement, statement, options, change, but, okay? It was a nationwide reward. And, what is it? It, it, pronoun, it, pronoun. Now, so, pronoun, pronoun, noun, pronoun, noun, pronoun, pronoun, noun, noun. But, noun, so, noun, start, 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 option B, eliminate, option D, eliminate, simple, logic. But, it, pronoun, noun, noun, few causes, that were making the path for revolt. Because, so, causes, what, we will talk. These causes included, and, few, these causes. My, these, words, this, okay? That, these, these, those, this, that, these, those, such. This, that, these, those, such, words, you, so, what, already, idea, so, this, that, these, those. Words, you, already, what, before, reference, these, causes, these, you, the, 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 the. But, obviously, Q, which, then, R, first, Q, then, R, so, causes, these, causes, causes, these, causes. But, Q, option, Q, 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 okay? So, what is it? R, Q, so, answer, so, answer, yeah, two steps, like, you, let, range, so, P, start, you, you, start, yes, start, you, so, yes, possibility, yes, R, yes, P. Through, options, convenient, okay? The Royal Indian Navy, muted, in India, was started on eighth February. And, Royal Indian Navy, muted, muted, noun, 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 yes, R, yes, P, yes, P, yes, R, but, not, not. पी एसपी एक रोचनी ये लोन उचित नहीं एक रोचनी एसआर कब बट अलाक रोचना कर मन की दान सर का दम मेरी ये लाइन चाहिए चुन ये लाजी कर यूचेन बट से एग्जामिनेशन लो तकू टाइम लो मेरे लेते कंफर्टेबल का फील आउट तारों आला जी की यूचेसी इमेज चाहिए असुन अंत गानी ये वाला चेस ना वी लाल चेस ना का कुंडा मेरे ये द कंफर्टेबल का फील आई थी मेरा ऑप्शन द्वारा कंफर्टेबल का फील आई थी ऑप्शन द्वारा चाहिए डी लेंथ इक्का सेंटेंस चले बीसी अदम चेस को मेरे चेक गर्त ना लाचे बट टाइम ने चूस को टाइम तकू टाइम लो डेंटी गिवन टाइम लो गिवन टाइम लो चेक गर्त ना ले द अधिकारी मन की इंपॉर्टेंट ओके ना सो एनीवे ये क्वेश्चन आंसर यूथ नंते ऑप्शन इजी वन नौन नू प्रोनॉन नू तरवा तो मन के उन्हें सो फ्यू कॉजेस दीज फ्यू कॉजेस लेंथ दीज कॉजेस इजी वन राइट ना लेट अस गो फॉर डी नेक्स्ट क्वेश्चन चुड़ू के उन्हें इसमें कैंटी सेंटेंस इंप्रूवमेंट इच्छा लेट अस आंसर दिस वन राइट डी हॉस्टल्स वर टेरिफाइड मन की टेरिफाइड मीनिंग मन कैंटी डेक बाय पद डन एमंटामु टे टेरिफाइड एंटर मैन ओके ना डी हॉस्टल्स वर टेरिफाइड व्हेन दे सी डी ग्रू सी डी ग्रूसमली अपीरेंस मन के उन्हें ग्रूसमली अपीरेंस फर्स्ट अपन के दिल यानी दिल यानी डे मन के प्रणसरे सिंटैक्स दिल यानी ओके ना मन के प्रणसरे वो का आर्टिकल वो ची ओके ना वो का आर्टिकल वो ची तरवा तो मन की वो का नौन उचित ना निकॉन ओके ना वो का आर्टिकल वो का नौन उससे आम जिन्हें मन के ना वाला डेंट ओनली एडजेक्ट वे रावल ना दो इन द ये पुरे नसरे ये पुरे नसरे मन की वो का आर्टिकल वो का आर्टिकल लेंथ ए वो का आर्टिकल वो का नौन उचित नंते मजे कच्चन एन वाली एडजेक्ट तू मन चुड़ू दम एक के उन्हें दो सी डी डामन कैंटी आर्टिकल तरवा तो ये अपीरेंस अपीरेंस मन के नौन देंगे ये एनसी ये नहीं 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 कब बट थी आर्टिकल वो चिन्ह नौन उचित मजे एन वाली एडजेक्ट तू कहने उतनी यलवा ये उतनी इनको पॉइंट मन कैंटी डेंटे ये पुरे नसर मन की एडजेक्ट तू की ओके ना एडजेक्ट तू की यलवा याद देते मन को चेत देवा उन्हें डेंटे एडवर्ब बाय उन्हें डेंटी यलवा ये उन्हें डेंटी एडवर्ब ये पुरे नसरे एडजेक्ट तू की यलवा याद चाहते ना डेंटे मन को चेत देवा उन्हें डेंटी एडवर्ब कब बट मन की ग्रूसमली ये उतनी एडवर्ब बोत निकाल मन के ना वाली एडवर्ब का वाली का बट मन का आंसर उतना चुड़ू दम राइट दे सादा ग्रूसम इक्का मन के उन्हें ग्रूसम एडजेक्ट तू इक्का उन्हें ग्रूसम एडजेक्ट तू क्रीम ग्रू ग्रू गल ग्रू ये उतना तो मन की जनरल का सो कल लिक्विड फूड नेम एंटर ग्रू एंटर कब बट दिन इलमिनेट चेस चुके ना लिक्विड फूड नेम एंटर मु ग्रू एंटर अधिकारी सो नो इंप्रूवमेंट अधिकारी इनको सो मन की करकट का दम बट नो इंप्रूवमेंट को द का द अंत मन के नहीं 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 सादा ग्रूसम वो टी सीन डी ग्रूसम वो इरोलिटल लेट मन का आंसर का वाली प्रिया डिसाइड जस्ट मैन ट्रैक्टर बिल्कुल ये उतनी सीन उचिन्न ये उतनी सीन सीन मन कैंटी सी सा सीन गदा मन की वी थ्री ये मन कैंटी वी थ्री सी सा सीन सी सा सीन ये पुरी गुड मन की सब्जेक्ट तरवा तो डायरेक्टली वी थ्री ये पुरी गुड राधा मन के ओके ना सब्जेक्ट तरवा तो डायरेक्टली वी थ्री पुरी गुड राधा ये प्रश्न मन की सब्जेक्ट तरवा तो मन की वी थ्री रावल डेंटे मजे ये उन्हें छु हाफ फॉर्म्स उन्हें छु ये उन्हें छु हाफ फॉर्म्स उच्च तरवा तो एन वो